Good evening. It is seven o'clock. We are in the school board room of the administration building on North Avenue in the lower level. We will call this meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board to order with a moment of silent reflection. Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. Jeros?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, we will move to the regular agenda. The first item is approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mrs. Randall, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Fee, thank you. Is there any Board comment on the consent agenda? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. We move to the recognitions section of tonight's meeting. It's a very special recognition tonight. At the September 10 Board meeting, the Board shared the news that State Superintendent Tony Evers named Eisenhower third and fourth grade teacher Nancy Tarian, Wisconsin's Elementary Teacher of the Year during a surprise ceremony at Eisenhower on September 5. We have invited Ms. Tarian to this meeting to present her with a plaque of recognition for this award. I believe she's here this evening. Would you like to come up? Oh, you can sit down or you can stand. You can take charge, just like you do in your classroom. Because tonight, you are, we're here to honor you and what you do, so we'd just like to hear, you know, how was that day and tell us about your kids. And we have the Board will have a, you know, opportunity to, you know, answer, you know, ask you things or to, you know, comment. So I'm actually kind of nervous because I've never had a Teacher of the Year here, and so this is pretty awesome for us.
I'm a little more nervous than you already am.
Right. Well, that's why I told you that. So, you know, we're all nervous together. This is, this is so special, you know, so.
Yeah. First of all, I have to say, thank you very much for inviting me to come here today. I'm very honored by this reward. And I just have to say that the whole experience has really been surreal and awesome. Going back to actually when that day occurred, the fact that it was on the second day of school, and I think it was about 100 degrees in the gym, and walking our kids into the assembly in our gym and not having any clue really what was going on, seeing all the cameras that were there. But of course, we've oftentimes had other assemblies where, you know, famous athletes were there. It was just a shock when my name was announced. And at the same time, I was amazed at how our principal, Kristen Bowers, had arranged all of this without me ever finding out. Because with having a family of four kids at home, that's a pretty big task to entail. So she gets a real round of applause for that. But, yeah, we go through them. But I have to say that, you know, it's a very humbling experience because our job, we don't do alone. I am surrounded by amazing people. I mean, not only educators, principals, administrative people, that we don't do our job alone. And we are in this as a team. So I have accepted this award for all the amazing teachers, you know, in this district. And I'm honored and blessed.
Okay. Did the, what was the kids' reaction?
This, my students?
Yeah.
Oh. Well, I think they were shocked. I think at first they didn't figure out that this was their teacher. It was the second day of school, so I think many of them were thinking, this is my teacher? So I think they were very shocked. And, you know, what's really a great thing that has come from this is the number of emails and ladders from former students. And I remember when I first started my career, there were so many wonderful mentors that said to me, oh, you know, wait until you see the impact that you make on children's lives. And of course, you know, at the beginning, you think, oh, just let me get through this day of trying to teach. But hearing from former students and where they're at, and I share a story of one student that came in speaking absolutely no English at all. And I found out actually shortly after that, that she is in law school at Marquette. So, I mean, that's just amazing to me. And hearing the success stories of where these kids are at. And sometimes you think as a teacher that you never can touch a life, but we do every single day. So that has been such a, such a reward in itself. And I just, you know, encourage teachers every day that yes, our job is tough. Yes, you know, there are ups and there are downs, but we do make a difference.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. We're so blessed to have you here.
Well, thank you. I'm very honored.
Okay. Would anyone like to say anything? Mrs. Weber, please?
You have a number of guests tonight. May we know who your guests are?
I do. Well, first of all, I have our amazing, my amazing principal, Kristen Bowers.
Could we ask her to stand?
I have my amazing mother.
Okay. Mrs. Randall?
I just would like to add my congratulations. And I appreciate you coming here tonight. I know that where you really celebrate is in the classroom with your kids. And I'm sure you do make a difference. So, thank you so much.
Anyone else? Well, thank you so very much for being in our district. And congratulations. And I think we're going to take some pictures. So we will have a brief recess from the meeting so that the cameras are rolling while we have these total moments. So we will recess as of now.
You do the plaque on the camera, please.
Pardon me?
Can you present the plaque on the camera?
Oh, I think you're right. I think we should. Oh, that's why Amy tapped there. I told you, I was nervous about this. So, all right.
I was trying to be subtle with that word.
Wait, well, you can't be subtle with me. Okay. So we have this plaque. And can we bring this out front for you? So do we want the whole board here for this? Nancy Tarian, thank you so very much. And congratulations for your work and what you, thank you for what you do for our district. Nancy, you gotta get ready for a picture.
Yeah, get the board.
Okay. So what do you want us to do?
You want the board members over here?
Yeah. Just get right over there.
I'll get out of here. We're standing in front of the table here.
Congratulations.
No, it doesn't. Already went on there.
Are we ready?
Sure.
Is the camera rolling? It is. Okay. We'll reconvene this meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board at 7:12. Mr. Croner, please, will you read the business? Pardon me? Oh, yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry. There was a request that we rearranged the agenda a little bit to bring the physical education option report under Student Learning up to the beginning of the agenda. So may we have that, please? Thank you, Mrs. Ehrenberger. Will you introduce your panel?
Yes, I'll be happy to do that. And thank you to the Board for letting us move this up on the agenda. We appreciate that. With me this evening is Nancy Bradigan. Nancy is a physical education teacher at Easton Longfellow and the content team leader for physical education. Next to her is Krista Botzberg. She teaches at West High School Physical Education. And Terry Candle is next to me, and she is an East High School Physical Education teacher. We also have a couple other, we have, I believe, Matt Good is in the audience. He's a physical education teacher at West, and John Simon is here now. And so we have several members of our physical education department here with us this evening, as well as Mr. Hughes, the principal at East High School is here as well for this report. What we have for you first is that we spent a lot of time having conversations about the new state law. And the physical education teachers have been very supportive of understanding that this law was passed and that it's something that our school district needed to do. So we never had disputes about whether or not we would move forward with that. But we had some discussions about our physical education program and how we sustain and provide a quality physical education program for all students as we transition through what we consider like yet another change in physical education. Because if you remember, we were here a couple years ago restructuring our physical education program. So first, I'm going to ask Dave Duttonshire to pass out to you. We did edit our policy many times before we gave it to you. But of course, after we gave it to you, after other eyes on this policy, we did not change anything in the essence of what we wrote, but we did some further editing that I'm going to read the policy out loud with the editing changes for you. So first of all, the policy is titled "The Wauwatosa School District Physical Education Policy" because the policy that we're presenting to you is more than just the state opt-out policy. It is a larger policy on physical education program. So the state law requires a student to earn one and a half credits of physical education for graduation, which must be taken over three separate years. That is a state law that's been in effect for a long time. And, you know, we have diligently tried to enforce that. It means our counselors have to do a lot of record-keeping and keeping track of when students take physical education. But the intent of the law is that the three courses of physical education are taken over the course of three out of the four years of high school. Now that with the new policy that we're looking at, we have, excuse me, okay. Further, the Wauwatosa School District in alignment with Section 118.33, 1E of state statutes, allows high school students the Wisconsin Physical Education Option, and that is the words that we're using to describe it, which means a student who participates in a sport or other organized sanctioned physical activity may, in lieu of a .5 credit of physical education, fulfill that .5 of physical education by completing an additional .5 credit of English, social studies, math, science, or health education, provided the following additional requirements are met. The student shall provide evidence of participation in a qualifying sport or other organized physical activity as defined by administrative guidelines, or satisfy any other conditions identified in administrative guidelines to meet eligibility for the physical education option. And our guidelines are communicated to us, the definition of a high school sport or physical activity, our guidelines have been, are relatively liberal in that we are saying any high school-sponsored sport, to include cheerleading and dance, and also any sanctioned organized physical activity club, which takes place in or out of high school. So we are acknowledging beyond high school-sponsored programs. So we moved our second bullet, or our second point down to, this would be more of a local policy. But in addition, the Wauwatosa School District requires that students take one of the required units of physical education, .5 credit, in the physical education school year program, which does not include summer school online or a physical education option. And we're going to talk to you about the rationale for that, that request in the policy. That's part of why our physical education teachers are with us here this evening. So I'm going to start by saying that we feel strongly committed to ensuring that every child has a chance to participate in a qual, in a high-quality physical education program. Our physical education teachers here were a couple years ago to talk about the choice physical education program, which would mean that students would have the opportunity during the school day to be able to choose which activity they would participate in. And we have to say that the popularity of the summer school program, which had over, had 320-plus students in it this past summer, has had an impact on our physical education program. And as a result of that, the choice program hasn't, is no longer viable because in order to deliver that program, you have to have several classes of physical education offered at the same hour so teachers can provide the choice. Otherwise, if there's just one section of physical education, there is no choice. So summer school has indeed, while it's been a really positive and our most popular summer school course, has had an impact on our physical education program. So as a result, we have to have a conversation that's not about jobs or, you know, how, how teachers feel about it. But the conversation is really about how do we feel as a school district about sustaining a quality physical education program? And as the Director of Student Learning, our physical education teachers have been very vigilant about staying current in physical education, working to improve their practice. I know they are one of, one team of teachers that is continually trying to reinvent themselves and provide a program, a physical education program, where students will understand that it's a lifelong fitness and have them embrace that and move on in their life with that. So they have, again, again, spent time recreating their program. And tonight, they're going to talk to you first about the rationale for why they would like students to have at least one experience in our program. They're asking for just one. And in return for that one experience, we, the students still have the opportunity to do a state opt-out, to do the Wisconsin opt-out. Students are, well, also they're offering an opportunity for students to be able to do an online course. And we know that summer school is still part of options for students. So they're just asking that as part of having all those options, that we don't forget that we also want to have a high-quality program. So for those students that aren't athletes, that they have a choice that they can make in understanding, you know, why physical fitness is an important life skill. So first, we're going to talk about the rationale. And then we're also going to describe for you the restructured program that they would like to offer to students on the next school year. So I believe Terry is going to start with rationale.
Good evening. I'm Terry Candle again. So I'm here to tell you why we feel it's so important to have a physical education course provided to students during the school day. A lot of what I'm going to tell you are things that Mr. Hughes and I shared at the National No Child Left Behind Conference that we presented in Washington, DC a number of years ago. And it still holds true today. As most of you know, exercise causes our bodies to breathe heavier. And when that happens, oxygen-rich blood is pumped into our brains. And when that oxygen is in our brains, the short-term effect of exercise is that we're more alert, we're able to think more clearly, it allows us to focus better, and it even gives us more energy. Even though students or adults even go into exercise sometimes feeling low energy or lethargic, by the time you're done, the end result for hours afterward is an increased amount of, of energy. So we think that those reasons alone, or those outcomes of exercise, are valid enough reasons to really want our students to be exercising during the day. Because that will lead to better performance in classes following their FIAID class. But along with that, research has found that students who exercise on a regular basis actually form more brain nerve cells. This is relatively new research. I have an article from Newsweek that I would be happy to share with you if you're interested that explains it more in-depth than what I'm going to take time to do right now, because it's quite a complicated system. But basically, when you exercise, it sets off a chemical reaction in your body that eventually ends with forming new brain cells or nerve endings in your brain. These nerve endings connect to other nerve endings, and it actually increases the students' capability to acquire knowledge. So by exercising during the day, we feel that there are both short-term, you know, effects of the day, and also those long-term effects of increasing their capacity of knowledge. And we really feel that that's one of the ways that, you know, we're not a tested department on ACT tests, or we don't have an AP course that, that, you know, kids take exams for for college. But we really feel that by, by giving them that chance to exercise during the day, we can help them perform better in the classroom then academically in all those different areas. Other important factors of exercising during the day include the fact that they, exercise releases those feel-good hormones. You know, after you exercise, you get almost kind of a natural high. That's, that is hormones that are being really released into your body. And exercise also decreases stress and anxiety levels, and it's been associated with decreased discipline problems in school, excuse me, in schools in the past. So we feel that physical, physical education in school is in line also with the district's wellness initiatives and the nutritional initiatives. And we feel that by keeping FIAID in a students' day, that we're really making a statement as a district that we're committed to teaching the whole child. And so those are just a few of our reasons. And Krista's going to talk more about the relationship part of, of having students in physical education.
Mr. Meyer, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Excuse me, can I, can I go back?
Sure.
The addition, the additional sentence, is this saying that prior to now, kids did not have to take a course within the school day? That they could fulfill the three required courses outside of?
We never, we don't really have a policy at all about physical education in Wauwatosa. But we complied with the state requirement. And when summer school came into existence and physical education was offered, you know, we've never addressed how many times a student could take physical education in summer school. So in the absence of policy, they could take all three courses in summer school.
And the practice has been that that's happening?
I think the practice has been that we have a large enrollment of students taking summer school, but that not, that, we don't have any actual data of how many kids took all courses in summer school. But certainly, summer school, especially for incoming freshmen, has been very popular. And we don't want to take that option away because we, we discussed that. But we, we feel that they, students do that because they're looking for flexibility in their schedule. And that makes sense, and that's for kids. So we want to do what's best for kids and balance that with also some other things that are best for kids.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm just here to talk a little bit about relationships that we build kind of with our students every single day. And as physical education teachers, we're able to build a little bit of a different relationship than maybe a coach would in an athletic sport. Athletics prepare students for one sport or activity, where physical education teachers and classes give students a wider variety of activities and skills to help students learn how to maintain and keep that active lifestyle. The most important skill, or the most important thing that we think physical education provides is a chance for children to work together with other kids at different ability levels and interests. And that creates a sense of community within our schools. I mean, we see a lot of, a lot of students every single day, and we're involved in a lot of things. And in our profession, we have a different way of being able to connect with our kids. It's much more of a social atmosphere where we're building relationships, working on sportsmanship, working on building problem-solving skills within our class. And we want that opportunity to be able to continue to work with those students and teach them those things. And in some of the courses that Nancy's going to describe, we're going to do some leadership opportunities with our students so that we can build their skill set so when they go to college and they go out in the workforce, that they are much stronger individuals from our district.
So what I'm going to basically reiterate is that, that was, that we are not changing the curriculum that we currently have. We're regiding it as we did a couple years ago when we thought of the choice program being, you know, a good alternative to what we were doing and a step forward to a student-centered program. So now we're just kind of broadening it back out and actually having actual courses put back into the course catalog so that, that allows still the choice to be had. We used to do a PE 9, PE 11, or PE 9, 10, and 11, and then have all these electives. Now, basically what we're doing is having a foundations class that is going to be a prerequisite for all students to take before they take any other type of FIAID class. It kind of prepares them for anything other that, anything else that they would do. And they can take it in either ninth or 10th grade. It used to be obviously PE 9. So we're broadening it out and giving the kids the flexibility of either taking it ninth or 10th grade to get that foundation down. And that's where we're going to introduce a wide variety of activities that we've done technically in the PE 9 class already. A variety of team, individual fitness, aquatics, all those types of activities will be included into that class. And then obviously, the
And then obviously, the foundations of the fit principle that we've kind of driven into the PE nine class currently to educate those students on what it means to develop a program for yourself and what does that look like in your daily life? You know, how many times do you work out and what type of activity you're doing and how does that correlate to you being a healthy person outside of school when you are no longer required to take PE? Then we move up, we have this beautiful pyramid. It's really nice. I think she said, it's close. That's close. So obviously, the foundations is the first one and then the kids, after they take that, the students are able to have choice of certain courses. And one is going to be a general PE class which is focused, is going to be on participation in team individual activities to develop cardiovascular fitness. Activities are included but not limited to volleyball, basketball, water games, ultimate frisbee, golf, pickleball, badminton. It's a general course that kind of hits everything. Extreme PE is another option that we've developed out of our current. It's a variety of team and individual sports aimed at increasing cardiovascular endurance through a high-level participation and organized games. It's kind of like that, that step above general for those kids that really get into sporting activities and allows them to maybe compete at a higher level without losing the academic portion of it obviously, but it's just a step, it's a step above the general basically. All these are including aquatics, just so you guys, because we want to make sure we're still utilizing our pools. So Extreme PE would include that as well. Another option is strength and conditioning. It's designed for the student who wants to improve their performance on or off the athletic field by increasing their strength, endurance, agility and speed. We're kind of trying to gear this towards the students that are possibly involved in athletics to give them an option to do their lifting and their speed and agility work in the school day. It will open up their after-school activities, a lot of, I know I coached and we actually, we all have coached at some points, that to have a better athletic program, we need to be bigger, stronger and faster. And a lot of times, given the constraints after school with practice times and kids being involved, which we encourage, sometimes they don't have that time to get into the weight room to be able to develop that strength. So if we offer a class that can do that for them during their school day, then that allows that to be taken off of the practice time. And obviously, we would be working hand-in-hand with any of the coaching staff and getting their programs and making sure that we understand what is, they need those students to do in the class. So that's kind of where our aim is for the strength and conditioning. Shape It Up Trends, it's a course for students who want to achieve health and wellness but does not want to exercise in the competitive nature of team and individual sports. They're going to develop, you know, personal fitness goals and try to work towards those. We've, one of our colleagues did a class like this while student teaching and it was a pretty, you know, well-received class. You can bring in all types of the new fitness trends like the zumba and the kickboxing, insanity, you know, different types, anything that's happening in the fitness world, we're going to put it into this class and expose them to it, obviously at a level that's appropriate for high school students. But that's basically is Shape It Up Trends. Adventure Pursuits is an exciting class that's designed to motivate students who are looking for adventure and leadership development. Obviously, we are going to be utilizing all of the adventure pursuits that we have incorporated into the high schools through our PEP grants, the outdoor, indoor courses as well as the rock climbing walls. And then we're going to branch out and include things like orienteering, archery, possibly a camping unit, not quite sure, but that's, you know, to get that out-of-the-box type of thinking for FIAID, for those kids that want to step away from the competitive nature possibly, not necessarily towards fitness, but still works on the same components that we do in all of our FIAID classes, which is, you know, building the team concept, working on sportsmanship and then obviously, there is exercise through any adventure course that we do. It's just done in a very obviously different way. And then we have our second or our third pyramid is the additional pathways, which obviously is going to be the opt-out, that you can only do that once. An online PE option that we are currently developing and then obviously, our summer school PE program. So throughout all of the options that we have, we think we can reach every student's needs and wants and still have it as a choice for them. They won't be changing obviously as rapidly as they do now. They will have, they have a semester-long course dedicated to whatever it is that they choose. And obviously, our hope is that we are enticing the students and giving them enough variety that they will choose to do more because obviously, we'd love to see more kids in FIAID because the more active they are, you know, the healthier they become and the more, you know, academic increases we can see in the classroom as well. So we're hoping that maybe broadening it back out instead of just titling it PE choice, there's still choice within here, but it's more defined and a little bit more directed.
So I'm just going to give like a quick recap and summary in case we have community members that are listening and want to really understand that we are, in our policy, we are writing in the, what the Wisconsin state law had talked about, having students have the ability to take an option of another academic course. So students, the law states that students can take another academic course to replace the half-credit physical education, okay? So in return for that, and so we're putting that into our policy, but we are making our physical education program more flexible, more enticing. We are adding other options for students like the online learning option. We are looking to pair, so students aren't, that can utilize our FIAID program in order to do some of the things that are maybe time-consuming for them after school, like with the weight training, some of those kinds of things. So in return for asking to at least have one experience for a student in our FIAID program, we've added like lots of flexibility as a way to, to help to show how important it is for our students to be able to have a physical education experience.
Is that it?
The end.
The end. Mrs. Weber, please.
What is geocaching? I've not heard that term.
Geocaching, it's, if I, if I understand it correctly, I haven't done a whole lot of research. You get coordinates that you have to manipulate and you have to have.
Geocaching unit.
A geocaching unit or GPS and it gives you coordinates and you have to utilize the device to get to those coordinates. And, I mean, my children did it with my brother actually and they went to the coordinates and there's a box and you open up the box, you take something and you put something in and then you move on to the next geocaching. It's, it's kind of like orienteering in a sense, but with a little surprise and a give-back.
Higher technology.
It's utilizing technology within your classroom, basically, so.
And then, how has rope climbing been accepted? I saw some young people at East and they looked like they were having a good time.
They loved it.
And it was a beautiful day. Are there good numbers that are participating?
More numbers than we can currently, we tend to go over what we originally thought we would just, you know, limit in our classrooms to accommodate the amount of students that wanted to take the adventure stuff. With the three different courses, with the three different units we technically run are an outdoor course, an indoor course, and then the rock climbing. With those three different options, we are, you know, getting anywhere from thirty to thirty-six kids wanting to be in that unit at all times, so.
Each hour of the day.
Yeah, each hour of the day. We've never struggled to have students want to be in that. It's very forward-thinking and kids are able to take risks with being safe and I think high school students enjoy that because they can step outside of the box and do something that, you know, isn't offered just in any other day or any other school.
Where is the rope climbing at West? I know where it is at East, but I have not seen.
It's right, you can see it from the expressway. It's right outside next to our tennis courts.
So would that be more the east end of the tennis court?
Yes, it's east end. Yeah, right into the freeway.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. P.
Thank you. First off, I'm excited for this and I have to tell you, my high schooler is excited about this because he's involved in sports and has been looking forward to this coming through. My question for the district as a whole is, will this fundamental class, this prerequisite class be offered in the summer or will it be anticipated that the students take that during the year of their ninth, you know, during the regular school year?
We struggled with that because we feel so passionate about how we, as a collective group, as district employees, teach our classes, but we understand the, the reasoning we needed to be flexible to be offered in the summer school. So we, more than likely, it'll be able to be offered in summer as well as in the regular school year.
Well, my initial reaction is that I would hope that it would be because I can otherwise anticipate that being the only gym class that the students take during the school year. So I'm glad that that will be an option. Thank you.
Mrs. Randall.
I maybe have a misunderstanding. I thought that the law was optional.
It's optional. They do not, are you saying that a student?
We don't have to allow students to take five, a half-credit.
Yes, that's true. It is left up to local school districts in order, if they want to pass a policy. And we have had conversations about this and, and we have support of the Physical Education Department that, yes, we want to offer a policy because we do know that there are, we're trying to do what's best for students. And, you know, we, we do feel that it's best for students that are out for athletic programs and, and clubs. They are physically active, they're doing the kinds of things that the program would support. But we just don't want to lose sight of the fact that there's a reason why we have physical education programs in the high school and we still want to be able to build a quality program for all those kids that aren't. You can only opt-out once according to state law, so kids can't opt-out every year that they're out for a sport. It's a one-time option for them. So we're just trying to make sure that we have, we still have a sustainable program that is of quality for students to be able to participate in because we really want them in our program.
Is, is the one opt-out that's part of the law or is that our district?
No, that's state law.
Okay. So I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how I feel about it, so. Especially hearing you building up our program.
It's, it's.
And the need to have the kids during it, during the day. And, you know, frankly, kids have been in sports forever and also taken FIAID.
I mean, if, if it were truly up to us, we would be requiring kids to take eight semesters of FIAID.
I know, that's what I'm hearing.
Because we think it's so important and we're so passionate about it and we so love the interactions that we can have with the students and see, and we see what they get out of it. But on the flip side of that, we also understand how busy kids are. We all have our own children, we know how we struggle with our schedules after school, with their schedules, so in response to the needs of the students, that is.
Do we know like percentage of kids, you know, that will qualify to opt-out or? I guess I'm wondering.
A lot of kids will qualify for it, however, I think what a lot of the community members and possibly the students don't understand is that you don't get to opt-out and then not do anything for that half-credit. I think a lot of people have to make sure that they understand, as Beth reiterated at the end of our, is that in lieu of taking FIAID, you now have to take a core course for that half a credit, which for some, you know, students, they're all for that, they want that advancement, they want to be able to do something like that and that's great. And actually, that's, that's what gives me a little bit of comfort knowing that instead of being physically active, at least their academically going to be challenging themselves, whereas if it were a study hall or something along those lines, that would have, I would have a lot more reservation. But at least the students who opt-out are then putting their time and energy back into their academic rigor and taking an additional core class. So I don't know that, you know, and I, trust me, I'm, I'm there with you, but there's, you know, we've learned that it's important to be flexible and.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I should say, you guys gave an awesome presentation about the need.
And the other thing that.
And I, I would, you know, I would like to see us increase rather than.
The other thing that they've done to enhance that opt-out is by adding an online course for those students that maybe aren't wanting, they're out for a sport and don't want to opt-out because they don't want to take an additional English, math, science, social studies or health class, they have an online option where they, the physical education teacher would teach that course and monitor their physical activity in the club or the sport. So it actually gives kids even one other option, another, a different way to be able to opt-out without having to do what the state law is saying, that it has to be an academic course. So we, we're trying to put as much flexibility into program as possible because we're trying to promote fitness from every single angle, so whichever way you come at it.
Yeah, I, I realize all that, I just, I'm not sure, like I said, how I feel about it. Frankly, you can take that extra English or whatever course during the summer. And so, so, yeah, so I'll be thinking about it, I guess. But I, I do appreciate how you've approached it. I just, I'm not sure. Thank you.
Mrs. Muft, please.
Thank you very much. This is a, I think it's a very well-thought-out approach and I'm very excited to see your team here, working on this together and it's not just administrative proposal. That's very exciting for me and I was one of the people who actually toured the PE for Life programming in Illinois, very excited about that as well. And one of the drawbacks actually of summer school is that it's the way that we structure it and that if we don't change the way we look at summer school, a lot of times, kids can't do other things that they'd like to do during the summer, family trips, other kinds of volunteer activities, other extracurricular-type activities that they enjoy to do that they can't do during the school year and only this summer, summer jobs. So there's, you know, there's a lot that can be said for that. And flexibility, a lot of students really want to take additional classes. They want to be able to take a music, a foreign language, maybe a fine art class. I mean, there's just a lot of choices out there. And the biggest thing I think we're promoting here is lifelong physical education and that's our total goal. And I think offering alternate ways to get there is really important because that's what we do as adults. And, you know, I think we're really laying the foundations to teach kids the same, you know, how to fit everything in and it can be very difficult. One, one question I have though is, the bullet of any sanctioned organized physical activity club and how will that be determined? Just so that it's clear for parents, the students, so.
We're, we're really not looking to have to police, we don't feel that we have the personnel or the time to police. So we're just, we're, we're being very flexible with that in that we'll have a form, a verification form, that's in the guideline that we will create, that if a student's going to go for the Wisconsin opt-out, as we're calling it, you know, they would complete that verification form. And we would ask for someone like the coach or someone in some authority in that organized activity to sign off on that so that we, we're not really into policing it because the real, the thing that the student's really supposed to be doing is taking extra English, math, science, social studies or health. That's really what the option is. So we just want a verification form that students are participating, that we, that they need to turn in and it must be signed and, you know, so that everyone's, where, what it is that they're substituting and we have some way of doing some record-keeping. But other than that, we're, we're, we're not planning to send people out to, you know, verify everyone's, you know, activity. We have to trust that the people that are in charge of those organized activities have integrity in what we're asking our students to do in lieu of the FIAID option.
Yeah, I just.
Not ours to police.
I just am really glad to see this proposal coming forward and that it's, it's coming from the people that are experts in our district. And really, again, this idea of lifelong physical education and really working more toward that and being flexible in order to do that. I just think it's, it shows that our school district has really worked hard to change the programming that we're offering kids and I'm just very impressed by what you've done here.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowder, please.
Thank you. That was a nice presentation. I'm also glad to see the flexibility. My oldest son, who's now graduated, was a young soccer player but stopped playing soccer and was quite inactive until he discovered rock climbing. And now I have fingerboards on the walls in my house, but that's a good thing. So he's been, so seeing that kind of thing in the PE program and giving kids opportunities for all different kinds of activities, I think is really good. The only thing about this proposal that struck me is, is when I read the last line where you're requiring half a credit be taken during the school year. Because until you explained the reasons why, my first thought was. Because until you explained the reasons why, my first thought was, oh, summer school is too successful. We have to limit involvement in summer school. And that seemed like the wrong approach. I mean, I understand your arguments and I agree with many of the ones of why it's useful to have kids take PE in school. But to limit it because too many kids want to be in summer school is, it's not troubling, but it's a little bit of a concern to me. I'm not sure how to address that. If we had, if we offered a new type of course in economics or English and it was so popular that kids all wanted to take it in the summer and it was considered equivalent to taking it during the school year, telling them, oh, we're going to limit it to the number of students that can take it because it's affecting what happens during the school year. I mean, that's a unique kind of problem that I don't know how we would address. I know this is one way to do it, but that's just, it's a concept that I hadn't thought of before. And if something is so popular that we have to limit access to it, is another approach to find a way to make that more successful.
Well, and that's why we wanted to really present to our rationale of why we think it's so important that we see these kids too, that we have a chance to have an impact on them as well.
If I can interject real quickly. A lot, I think, a basis of what we are also trying to teach them throughout the school year, we want them to put into practice during the summer on their own. That would demonstrate to us, one of, you know, our sixth national standard is, you know, getting enjoyment on your own, self-advocating for yourself and finding something to do on your own during the summer instead of being into a structured class. That's a lot of where I personally come from. I mean, I don't have a problem with summer school, but the limitation, I think, is to get a foundation class possibly out of the way, in a sense, not negative in a way, but to be able to then take alternatives over the course of the year to enhance what they've learned. And then, again, put those into practice during the summer where they should be, you know, being able to be a kid and have fun and hopefully maybe do the things that we've taught them to do.
But Nancy, I'm just going to stop you there because I do want to just say, the data looks like this for summer school. There are 154 incoming ninth graders chose to take physical education in summer school. That is the, that's the high, high group. That's very popular. And while we don't have hardcore fix, it's students looking to have flexibility in their schedules, you know, to have openings in their schedule. We don't want to take that away from them. So they can still take summer school. They can still take PE foundations in summer school. Physical education choice will still be offered in summer school. In totality, that comes out to be about 300 students. We already know what that looks like because that's happening right now. There's like 105 10th graders and then it goes down, like there's like 44 11th graders and 19 12th graders. So we don't think all students are taking summer school to free up their schedules. We don't think all students are taking summer school because they don't like FIED. I think if we actually dug into this a little deeper, we'd find that kids are really looking for flexibility. They want that room in their schedule and especially that freshman year because there's just not a lot of options for them. You know, they have to take all of these things. So in reality, we're not trying to say you cannot, we don't want you to take summer school. You could take summer school two years, two summers and still be, you know, doing what we're asking, even if you're not an athlete. You know, if you're just an average kid that's not out for sports and you want to take two summers of summer school, you could do that. But we're just asking that you have one experience with us. So they, like your son, they could have a chance to maybe be turned on to the rock climbing wall or something that maybe they haven't been inspired by yet. So we're just asking for an opportunity to have exposure in the program.
In the summer school program, summer school is listed as the alternative, one of the alternatives at the bottom or the top, I don't know where it is on the period list, but it's the bottom of the page here. So if someone takes PE foundations, say, as a freshman and they want to take another summer school course, are all the courses that are at the top here, are those all going to be offered in the summer? Or what will the options?
In summer, we've always offered the FIED freshman course, which we will continue to do. It's just that it'll be called PE foundations. And then we'll also have like what's been known as the FIED choice, which would be for students trying to fulfill beyond the ninth grade requirement. And so it'll be, now it'll just be like a general PE, but it could count for like your, you know, second, for another credit of FIED. So students will still have all the options they had in summer school. We're not taking those options away. You'll still have FIED foundations, which is ninth grade. You'll still have a chance to take another FIED in summer school if you, if you want. We're just asking for one experience during the school year.
But you won't be adding any of these other courses to summer school, like strength and conditioning?
That hasn't been really discussed as of lately.
So I don't mean this as a criticism. I think it's a gray area. It's an interesting problem to have that something is working so well, it's affecting another area and we need to make adjustments. So I'm, it's an interesting solution that you came up with and I'm actually kind of convinced by it. But it's, I see there, there could be different ways to go. But I think it's going to be an overall good program.
Thank you.
Any other board questions or comments? I have some questions, please. Well, basically, there's one theme. I'm not understanding what under state law is required. So can you?
State law first requires that you take 1.5 credits of physical education in three out of the four years of high school. That's one state law requirement that's been on the books for a long time.
You mean 1.5 spanning three of the four years?
Yep.
A total of 1.5?
Yes.
Okay.
Then the new state law is saying that in lieu of a half a credit of that requirement, if you want to take an English, a math, a science, a social studies, or health class, if you're out for a sport, you know, or physical activity, the exact wording of the law, I don't know that it says out-of-school clubs. I think we included that. But I'll just read to you, 11.33 of the state statutes.
No, okay, but I can get that, that you have to have one and a half credits. And oh, by the way, you can substitute for half a credit with outside activities of a certain nature. Okay?
Okay.
So the last paragraph of this policy then is something we added that's not...
It is not state law. It would be a local policy that we're adding. I want to be really clear about that.
And Mrs. Yerber, it's not state law either that we have to opt out.
That is correct. That's local policy as well.
So I like the whole thing, except, except, and to me, this is a deal killer because I believe in focus. If we had one of those sort of English-type achievement test questions and they said, of the four words below, which one doesn't fit? You've said flexible, enticing, option, and required. And the required just doesn't seem to fit with all the positive things you're saying about flexible and enticing. And it just seems that there's a, sort of, we lost our nerve a little bit on the success we've been having and what got us to that success to say now we have to require this half credit as specified, this half credit to be delivered by a particular specified vehicle in the, in the, in the, in the schedule. So I just don't see the logic for doing that to the kids. Because if you offer rope climbing and wall climbing and various other things, you won't have to require anything. They'll probably want to take some of those things because they tend to like to break up their day. So that's my problem with this, is that the required doesn't seem to be consistent with the philosophy of the whole rest of the program. That's all I have. Any other board comment or question? No, well, Mrs. Muft?
Since you brought up that point, I mean, is it possible to discuss, you know, what would be, what would be the alternatives?
Well, I would, I would suggest that the whole thing's fine except for the last paragraph.
Well, I, the only thing I will just say is, with an absence of that, I, I do have faith in our physical education program and I, I think it already does entice students. And we've kind of lost the flexibility because of the summer school, which is already an adjustment we've been making. We just have to answer the question, we're, it's kind of, it's like gambling a little bit. If we're okay with our physical education program, you know, we're sort of taking the gamble that we can entice students. I have full faith and confidence that we have a program that can do that. But because I, most students are going to do this anyway. I think we could probably survey them and if we need to, we could. But most students want to have physical education experience during the school year because they see and feel the benefits of that. What we're just doing by putting it there is saying that we think it's pretty important that every student has that experience. And we think it's so important and we so believe in what our program can offer students that we think we still want to ensure that they have an experience in our program with our curriculum and our climbing walls and, you know, the things that we have to offer kids. So we could do that. The other part's a gamble. This part of it is not a gamble. It's a part saying we value the program enough to have sustainability and at the same time, we believe that most students want to be in the program whether we make them or not.
No, but are we saying we don't believe in the summer program? That it's not as good an offering?
I, again, if we look at who's going to our summer program, it's predominantly freshmen and sophomores. And those students can still take physical education in summer school, both freshman and sophomore year. We're not saying they can no longer do that. They can. And it greatly drops off after 10th grade.
Well, but then it drops off because that's the choice of the students. So why do we need a requirement then? I see that's my problem. It's like, there's a requirement here that, that is looking for a need and there doesn't seem to be the need for the requirement.
And that is, that's an opinion you're entitled to have. We're trying to present an alternative and I guess that's part of the decision that the board would be making. But this is the alternative that we feel really good about standing behind so that we can have a quality program.
But I support everything else you have in here.
It's state law, you know, I mean, it's part of state law.
And, well, but the idea of the, of the particular, you know, types of PE offerings you have that you're saying so many kids will just love. And I mean, you're wanting to present that as an argument in favor of this and then you're saying, and they're going to love it, so we're going to require it. And, and so, but, well, if you really think they're going to love it, then you don't need to require it. Okay, I've had my...
Understood.
I've had my say. Certainly.
So I think we're...
Talking about these kids monolithically, like they all will want to do it or they all won't want to do it. In point of fact, you have a program that's really enticing and that's innovative and valuable and many, many kids will be drawn to that voluntarily. But there are some kids who will not be drawn to that and who need to be drawn to that. And so by putting in this safety net, then we will make sure that we get all the kids. And in the fitness, in the FIED program, we even have a course, an alternative PE for these kids who, for whatever reason, are really afraid or really have a lot of disdain for this.
But wait, please, please wait. I understand that. But there, these kids are required to have the 1.5 credits anyway. And you're saying that, oh, not to fear, it's not about pushing them out of the summer program. They don't sign up for the summer program anyway. So again, I say that you're providing a requirement and now I say a safety net. You're, there's a requirement where there's no need. There's a safety net where there's no hazard. So why would we build it in if the kids are going to take PE regardless?
Could I? Um, here's my fear, that a child will take summer school FIED going into their freshman year. They will do it again their sophomore year and then they will opt out or they'll take online. And they will never give themselves the opportunity to try any of these other courses because they don't know any different.
Okay, that, that makes a case, a claim, that the summer program is not as good as the regular year program. Otherwise, we'd say...
I don't think it makes that claim. It's, it's saying that they're not, they're not giving the school-year program a chance.
But it's supposed to be the same program.
And let me just say, this discussion started, like, we started this discussion over a year ago. But the premise for that discussion has always been that the summer school program is equally as quality as our school-year program. We started from that premise. We never said one's better or one's not as better. We're, but we do think there are some things that happen in a school-year program that have to do with the relationships that teachers build with them that are teachers that are in the building all day with kids. That's different from having a summer school teacher that is not connected with the district. And that it's a different kind of relationship that they connect with some kids that otherwise might not have been connected to. So we can't say we can duplicate everything in a summer school experience that happens during a school year. And so we're, we're looking at it from a perspective of the quality of the curriculum part, you know, it is what it is, you know? We offer the same course that we offer during the school year in summer school. But who we put in front of kids during the school year are people that are in the building many times way beyond the school day. They're in the building coaching and doing other things with kids and it's about that relationship piece as well as a curriculum. So, but, but we knew we were creating that argument. We knew the last statement. So, you know, everything we've been saying tonight is to help to defend that decision to say we want to ask each kid to have a halftime, a half-credit experience in our program. So, you know, that's what we've been, we knew that when we went into this.
Well, that's why we brought the rationale of what, what it can do for kids academically, for them to be physically active during their school day. It's proven through research that these kids can achieve more in their academic core classes if they're physically active during the day. And what better way to provide that through a quality physical education program? And that's the basis.
So you're going to force my hand in my comeback, which is to say, well, if we really believe that, why don't we require four years of FIED?
Fabulous. Let's do it. Thank you. Illinois does it.
No, no, all I'm looking for is consistency.
Mr. Meyer, can we make a statement?
When I'm done, all I'm looking for is consistency. You know, a requirement without a need, a safety net without a hazard, a distinction without a difference. You know, a benefit that's worthy of fighting for, that we only fight for, you know, one year. You're not proposing four years. I mean, I just sit here and a lot of times we vote yes or no and we're not down in the details. All we have to go on sometimes in our vote is, does it sound consistent? The message that they're giving us. So that's, that's my issue. Mrs. Randall, please.
I was just going to answer your question. There is a simple answer to the need. The need is created by giving them the opportunity to opt out if they're in sports. This paragraph is intended to get the kids in front of the teachers during the school day as part of the program. Right now, they're required to do that three different times during their school career. Now we're saying we're going to take advantage of this option that the state is offering, that we can change that from three to two and they can do a sport or whatever.
Okay, but that's an opt-out without an exit. To say they can opt out, but we don't like that, so we're going to make them stay.
But that is the need. That's the need that, that is creating this.
Well, then you're still not internally consistent in the program.
Well, I'm hearing it a little different, but I'm hearing they want these kids. They don't want to lose them. To me, you go back and you don't do the opt-out option, but...
What I find exciting is I've listened to this tonight. The part that I think it's a very subtle part of it, but we're teaching lifetime activity. So many times we get into the business world, we don't have time to do the walk, the tennis, whether, golf. I think this is setting lifetime goals, the importance of physical activity, not just sitting behind the, whatever you call it, Jamie, the typewriter, I'll call it, or behind the desk. We need to get out, we need to take time, even if it's just a walk at lunchtime. The importance of physical activity. And I thank you for that.
Mr. Crowder, please.
I want to say, I think the common ground with everyone here is that we all value physical education and we want kids to take as much as we can get them to take. I think the different options are based on when they would take it and that that's more of a philosophical decision. You could open up the summer program and offer... You could open up the summer program and offer the courses that you plan to offer during the school year. And let's say we surveyed the students and eighty percent of them said, "We, we love all these courses, we'd just rather take them in the summer." You know, then what do we do? We don't, you know, that's more of a philosophical choice. So, no one is saying that anyone should take any less PE. And you can also make the argument that if you let someone take rock climbing or canoeing or something in the summer, that could also entice them to take more during the school year. We don't know that until we've gone through the process. So, I think everyone's in favor of physical education. I mean, as a former high school athlete, I think, like all former high school athletes, I think about my sport quite often. And, you know, I got into it in school and a lot of kids do now, and I hope kids still do. So, we're all for PE. It's just, it's a philosophical choice of what is the best option for the students and when they take it. I think the reason I, as a board member, am just a little bit concerned is our philosophy has normally been, if we try something new and it's really successful, we find a way to make that work, make it even a better program. And so, the summer school PE program kind of fits into that. We tried something that turned out to be really successful. So, how do we make, how do we fit that into the other program and still make it both programs successful for students? So, I, I think we could go either direction and probably be very successful. But I think that's the, the main argument is if, if the students end up saying, you know, "This is, it fits in my schedule better, I'd rather be outside in the summer, if this is when I'd rather take PE," you know, should we make more of an effort to move in that direction? But I, I think they're equally valued arguments going both directions.
Question.
Yes, Mrs. Muffold.
Um, I was just sitting here thinking a couple of things as we're redesigning this program. The flow from summer school to the school day. And it sounds like we can see that changing for, you know, staffing purposes. If we have more of these half-credit classes, if I'm understanding this right, if we have more, instead of just PE foundations, if we have more of these half-credit offerings during the summer school, which has been discussed tonight, but not, nothing has been, you know, finally decided. What, what would the staffing be like? We don't know, correct? There wouldn't really be any way to know that. So...
Do you mean staffing for summer school or staffing during the school year?
Well, without, for example, without this required unit, what would staffing be like if it all shifted to summer school? And how would it even be offered? I mean, if I think about, how many students do we have at the secondary level? And how many kids are taking summer school currently? If we change the way we're delivering the services, what, what is the shift? And so, maybe this policy in my mind, I, I mean, I don't know because we really, we, we don't have any of those numbers. We don't have really any way of knowing because this is a new, you know, frontier for us, basically. But there's no real way to know that unless we start with this proposal. And we could change it if we find that's not enough flexibility for kids.
One other-
Yes, Dr. Odom, please.
...comment. And the reason that I support this is I think there is a difference between the summer school and the school year. And it's really, to me, it's the length of time that the course meets. Um, and I'll just use an extreme example. Exercising 24 hours in a row isn't as good as exercising an hour a day for 24 days. And I think there is some advantage to having courses that are spread out over a semester of time versus the compacted curriculum piece in the summer. So, I think, I mean, the idea of exercising, keeping kids active for a longer period of time is a positive as well.
Okay. But I'd still come back with the answer that, um, your own arguments, that it's usually the kids early in high school who are in summer school, that later on, the kids don't take the physical education in summer school, that they're taking it during the regular school year, and we have these enticing, exciting options for them. So, again, why do we need then therefore to require it? So, with that said, I'm done. Is the rest of the board finished? Is there any community comment? Is this going to come for a vote?
Yes.
The next meeting?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
So, we're going to move to the Business Services section of the agenda. Oh, there's an action item. Mr. Crowder, please, will you read that item?
Thank you.
And good luck to you on this very long-
Can I pause for a drink now?
Yes, please do.
It is recommended that the school board approve the attached, approved 2012-13 budget. Fund expenditures are summarized as follows. Number one, revising the 2012-2013 school district budget. Whereas, Chapter 65, Paragraph 90, Subparagraph 5, Sub-A, Wisconsin statutes requires the school board by a two-thirds vote of the entire membership to approve alteration made to the previously adopted 2012-2013 budget. And whereas the school board adopted a 2012-2013 budget on June 11th, 2012, now therefore be it resolved that the school board does hereby make the following alterations to the 2012-2013 budget. To the General Fund 10, was previously approved at an amount of $72,569,655. Uh, adjusted upwards by $1,478,505 for revised budget amount of $74,48,160. Donation Fund 21 is previously, previously approved at $90,500. There was no adjustment, and so the revised budget is for $90,500. Special Education Fund 27, previously approved at $11,301,354. Adjusted downwards by $553,233 for a final revised budget amount of $10,748,121. Non-referendum debt service fund 38 was previously approved at zero dollars and remains there. Capital Expansion Fund 41, previously approved at $1,500,000. Adjusted down by $1,500,000 for a revised budget amount of zero dollars. Capital Improvement Fund 49, previously approved at zero dollars and it remains at that amount. Food Services Fund 50, previously approved at $2,280,404. Revised downwards by $281,875 for a revised budget amount of $1,998,529. Recreation Department Fund 80, previously approved at $1,734,851. Adjusted upwards by $28,580 for a revised budget amount of $1,763,431. Total expenditure, all funds, previously approved at $89,476,764. Revised downwards by $828,023. And for a final budget amount of $88,648,741. Less inter-fund operating transfer from Fund 10 was previously approved at a negative Now recommended at a positive $699,932 for a revised budget amount of a negative $5,763,242. Net total expenditures, all funds, previously approved at $83,013,590. Adjusted downwards by $128,091 for a final revised budget amount of $82,885,499. Two, setting the tax levy. Whereas Sections 120.10, 120.12, Sub-3, and 120.44, Sub-2, Wisconsin statutes authorize and require the school board to determine the amount of monies necessary to be raised through taxation to operate and maintain the schools of the Wabatoosa School District. And whereas Sections 120.10, Sub-10M, and 120.44, Sub-2, Wisconsin statutes authorize the school board to vote a tax to create a fund for the purpose of financing current and future capital expenditures related to the buildings and sites. And whereas, Section 120.12, Sub-3, Wisconsin statutes requires the school district clerk to certify to the city clerk of the city of Wabatoosa the amounts so determined. And whereas the school board is interested in complying with the foregoing statutory requirements, now therefore be it resolved that the school board does hereby determine that $45,305,822 shall be necessary to be raised through taxation to operate and maintain the schools of the school district for the 2012-2013 school year. Be it further resolved that said monies shall be allocated and utilized as follows. General Fund, previously approved at $42,303,770. Adjusted upwards by $1,151,803 for a revised amount of $43,455,573. General Fund refund slash rescinded chargeback, previously approved at zero dollars, adjusted upwards by $1,89,177 for a revised total amount of $1,89,177. General Fund Personal Property Chargeback, previously approved at $62,419. Adjusted downwards by $62,419 for a revised budget amount of zero dollars. Capital Expansion Fund, previously approved at $1,500,000. Adjusted downwards by $1,490,000, leaving a revised budget amount of $10,000. Recreation Department, previously approved at $781,201. Adjusted downwards by $30,129 for a revised budget amount of $751,072. In total, the previously approved amount was $44,647,390. Was adjusted upwards by $658,432 for a final revised budget amount of $45,045,305,822. And I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder, and thank you, Mrs. Fee. Mr. Mack, I believe you have a presentation.
I do. Feel free to ask questions at any time. Um, total tax levy, I'm gonna go over first for the school year. The General Fund, $43,455,000. Capital Expansion, $10,000. And the reason I put the $10,000 into the Capital Expansion Fund, even though we're not gonna use it, is simply to keep the amort, there's an amortization schedule that reduces net shared cost if we would need it. The subtotal for the, basically, the, uh, fund under the revenue cap would be $40,43,465,000. And you add Recreation Department, $751,000. And you get the total without chargebacks of $44,216,000. And here, there was this, there was a change in the way DPI required us to report chargebacks this year. In the past, basically, everything just went under one chargeback number. And now what they have is refund, rescinded chargebacks, which are certified by the Department of Revenue. And that is contrasted by Personal Property Chargebacks, which we get invoices from the city. And this year, really, what we're gonna do is, I had to, I had to change everything around because the way they handle, the way you have to levy for this, there's some accounting differences. So, that's why you see the chargebacks broken out into two different numbers. So, the refund of chargebacks, and I'll go over show you that $1,89,000 number. That's the refund chargeback, and a personal property chargebacks are zero. So, the total levy is $45,305,822. And the General Fund, it's up $3,850,000 or 9.72 percent. But the Capital Expansion Fund is down $2,325,000 or 99.57. So, they're one in the same levy. The subtotal then is up 1.5 million or 3.64 percent. And the Recreation Department is slightly down, $835 or minus, just a slight minus. So, the total tax levy without the chargebacks is up 1.5 million or 3.57 percent. The refund chargeback, $1,089,000. And we didn't have that last year, that's why it's not applicable. And the Personal Property Chargeback is down $7,916. So, the total tax levy increasing $2.6 million or 6.1 percent. That refund chargeback of $1,089,177, the Wheaton part of that is $1,026,758. And the total Wheaton chargeback, you see it down below, is $2,53,515. That, that's what I'm dividing by two and putting it up into the $1,089,000. So, it's the half of the, half of that going into there. There were other non-Wheaton chargebacks on it. And this is perhaps where some, but some people were confused on that. But to get the total chargebacks, you would actually, that were certified by the Department of Revenue, you would have to add the $2,53,515 plus the $62,419. And if you didn't remember, in the proposed budget, you saw the $62,419 because that's what was non-Wheaton chargebacks at that point in time. So, the other thing I just want you to remember off of this slide is the non-Wheaton in 5.73 percent. And I'll, you know, I'll show you why when I show you the impact on the homes. The tax levy factors, and this is the, these are the only ways the tax levy can change in a district. Equalization aid has increased. So, the levy effect would be going down $6 million. But we had the special adjustment aid, which decreased 6.4 million. Basically, increased the levy 15 million. Chapter 220 aid decreased 479,000, increased the levy 1.12 percent. The computer aid, a slight decrease, actually increased the levy $1,000, but number's so big, there's no percentage increase. The revenue cap, increase $50 per member, $650,000, 1.52 percent. Remember, we have about 6,000 members, so it's about 300,000. But our three-year average for enrollment is also up, about 30, 30 in this year. So, the Recreation Department decreased $835. Again, I'll go to you ball on that. So, the total tax levy going up 3.57 percent for the revenue cap bond, 1.5 million. And without the Recre, where's she, I'm sorry, without the Recreation Department, $1,525,263 or 3.64 percent. Now, with the chargeback, basically, it's the same numbers except we go down toward the bottom. You see the refund chargeback increase, $1,089,177, increases the levy 2.55 percent. And the Personal Properties Chargeback is decreasing, $7,000, just a slight decrease. So, the total increase in the levy with the chargeback, $2,605,689 or 6.1 percent. Now, to show you the impact on the home, and I want to, I'm doing it two ways this year. Um, I'm gonna use the equalized value, and that's how I calculated when I showed you the impact of that incremental levy increase. Last year, the equalized value rate was $8,532, which equated our $250,000 home to $2,133 in 2011. Just so you know what these years, because I normally refer to these years in the year in advance, but I wanted to make this consistent with tax bills when I showed you these slides. in advance, but I wanted to make this consistent with tax bills when I showed you these slides. The tax is actually levied for the year that you're ending, and it's actually normally referred to as paid in the next year. So last year was the tax that was for the year ending two thousand and eleven payable in two thousand and twelve. So for next year, if the calculation would be two hundred and fifty dollars times an increase of the six point one percent, goes to nine dollars, mill rate, an increase of a hundred and thirty dollars in total. And if we go to, I wanted to break this down and show you the difference between with the chargeback levy and without. So if you take that same rate and you increase it three point five seven percent, you have an increase of seventy-six dollars. And then the incremental charge for that chargeback levy is two hundred and fifty dollars, and it increases two point five three percent there. Chargeback portion of the levy, I remember, and here's what I wanted to just show you 'cause I, I told you it was fifty-one dollars, and it has to come out exact, and it does. The fifty-one dollars is basically the fifty-four dollars, then you have to subtract off the sixty-two thousand dollar number that I referred to, the five point seven three of fifty-four dollars, it's three dollars. So you subtract it, and that's where I got that fifty-one dollar figure that I had showed you before. But I wanna show you this because really, that's a little bit high when you start dealing with equalized value. And I don't, equalized value, to me, really doesn't have much meaning because it, the only meaning it has is if you compare school district to, to school district, that's the only way you can really use that. Because you're, you're basically, with equalized value, you're changing two variables at the same time, the levy's moving and the equalized value moves. So it, you can't really get a good comparison when you do that. What I did was I just went directly to the tax bills, and I printed two tax bills out at random. And basically, to get the, the assessed levy rate, simply take how much someone paid in taxes off the school line and divide it by the assessed value. That, that's all you would have to do. If you wanted to find a growth tax rate without the school tax levy credit, you'd have to take that tax, plus add back on the box that had the, the school tax levy credit, and then divide it by the equalized value. But I, I did this on the net because that school tax levy credit is relatively constant. So these numbers here that I'm showing you should be pretty accurate within a half a percent. That's what I would say because the city might make slight adjustments from year to year on assessed value, and that would be referring to who's in the pie, who's, who's all in the pie. But these should be fairly accurate here. So on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, if we go up, that same six point one percent here, you've seen the increase of a hundred and five dollars. And the piece, if, just for the school district, normal revenue limited funds, three point five seven or sixty-two dollars. And for the two point five two, pardon, you're just, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said something. For the chargeback levy, it's forty-four dollars. So you can see there's a slight difference on that. So if I just showed you the equalized value in general, your tax bill is gonna be slightly less than the increase because you're using two different bases there. These slides now, I did not put the chargeback levy inside of tax levy numbers simply because it's a two-year shot here for that chargeback. And the other thing is, we already levied for those numbers. And to me, to put them in levy again is double counting, so I did not wanna do that, just so you know that. You can see graphically, the, the total levy, forty-four point two million there, and that includes Recreation Department. Without the Recreation Department, forty-three point four six million. The tax levy increase on a graphical, you see the three point six four percent, it's basically what it was two years ago. The nominal tax levy, which is just in today's dollars, you can see that line trending upward, forty-three point five, but as I would say, you need to look at it in this format because this is a truer picture in constant dollars, basically using a CPIU to make all the years equivalent as far as what the value of money was. And if you can go back again to the mid to late nineties, it was much higher in real dollars than it is today. However, it is trending slightly upward there. Property taxes and state resources, it basically showing a spread, it's gotten a little bit bigger mainly because state resources have gone down. Basically, the amount of aid we have received has gone down. I'm showing you these numbers, but I don't want you to get alarmed because the tax rate with the equalized value has, if you look at that bottom, bottom line there, it's a equalized value change of negative almost a six percent from eleven, twelve. So you're gonna see bigger numbers on that percentage increase. But when anybody, even if you read anything in the newspaper, if you wanna really know what's gonna happen to a tax bill, all things being equal, assuming there's assessed values are staying the same, you wanna always focus on the levy, not a tax rate. Because the tax rate always has two variables moving, and you can't tell what's gonna happen. So these rates, I'm showing you them, but they really aren't gonna have a bearing on, at all, on what's gonna happen on the tax, tax bills that people receive. The General Fund at nine point two two seven, increasing sixteen point six percent. Capital Expansion, just two, two cents on the mill, minus ninety-nine point five four percent. Rec Department, point one five nine, going up six point one five. And without the chargeback, nine point three eight eight or ten, ten percent. The refund chargeback, point two three one, but we didn't have it last year, so there's no calculation there. Total with the chargebacks, nine point six two zero or twelve point seven five percent. And this is just a graphical form of the, of the tax rate, again, showing it going up. But that's, again, on equalized value. I wanted to show you two slides, basically, just to show you where we were in June to where we are now. And keep in mind that the June benefit, the June budget has many, many estimated, like, variables in it, salaries, benefits, how many teachers we're gonna have, many things, including the benefits. The consolidated budget, when I refer to consolidated, it's everything under the revenue cap. Salaries and, the, the entire budget is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand from the proposed to revise, and salaries and benefits are actually down two point two million. And that's primarily because the health insurance is down one point seven million because we changed TPAs, which is a third-party administrator. We switched from Humana to United Healthcare, and we are gonna realize some savings in that change. And we also had an excellent year last year, in the first year of a high deductible health plan, and we saved some money. Cash in lieu of health, basically, is ended except for two of our contracts, so that's down two hundred thousand. And the salaries are down three hundred and eighty-three thousand because the estimated increases to the actual settlements that I had predicted are a little bit lower. Purchased services are up five hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Tuition to other districts is up two hundred and eight thousand. Contracted building maintenance is up a hundred and twenty thousand. Those are small projects that we do to buildings. The non-capital equipment is up one point nine million, and non-capital equipment technology, basically, it, it's a majority of that, is one point three million. And textbook, science textbooks, five, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand up, and a lot of that is carryover for money that actually just was not bought last year. Some of those textbooks are being bought this year. Capital objects, down thirty-five thousand, and insurance of their other objects are up two hundred and twenty-three. That's from the, that, that just gives you a snapshot from proposed to now. And I'm gonna go over where we are now compared to last year. The net general fund, when I say net, I'm subtracting out the inter-fund transfers, sixty-eight million. And the special ed fund, ten point seven million. The Capital Expansion Fund, we're going down to zero. That doesn't mean we're not spending any money on capital expenditures. What I did was I simply shifted the money from the Capital Fund forty-one into Fund ten. And the reason I did that is we're, we're far enough below negative aid right now where we'll execute more equalization aid next year by doing that. And that's simply an accounting thing that I did. The only reason we used to use that Capital Expansion Fund is because when we were in a negative aid position, it amortized those expenses and it made the aid loss less. So now I'm in a, a position where, because our spending decreased, we actually shifted back to the fund, putting, paying for the Capital Expansion Fund projects out right out of the General Fund.
Can I ask a question? This is sort of a accounting school question, that what's the accounting practice basis for shifting the posting of the capital, quote-unquote, capital?
It's actually not technically an accounting guideline, it's actually DPI, the way they calculate aid. It's really how they calculate the aid and how far we are underneath the, getting the spending limit on a secondary ceiling, which would kick us into a negative tertiary aid position.
Okay. So obviously, you're telling us this with the, you know, open meeting with the cameras rolling, so there's, you, you know, that, so DPI is fine with this?
Oh, you can do it. I mean, there's no problem with it whatsoever. I personally don't even know why, in the beginning, they set up that Fund forty-one the way they did. Because to me, for them to track the amortization schedules of every district is a lot of work.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know if it had something to do with negative tertiary aid districts getting together and say, we need some relief from this. That could have been the issue there, that forced them there, so. But if we're below that, I don't wanna keep that, we could still use Fund forty-one, but if I do that, we're gonna miss out on about two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand in aid.
Oh, I'm, I'm not, I'm not questioning your decision. I'm trying to understand the accounting or bookkeeping practice as to when they allow us to change our, you know, application of methods or change our methods, and they, they allow, okay, that's interesting. Thank you.
Recreation Department, total budget expenditure is one point seven million. Food service, just under two million, and a donation fund, ninety thousand dollars. The budget, budget expenditure changes last year to this year. The net general fund up one point six million or two point four one percent. The special ed fund is down two hundred thousand or one point eight nine percent, and the Capital Expansion Fund is down two point four seven seven million or a hundred percent. So the total, there's actually a decrease in spending of one million, eighty thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars under the revenue cap bond, or a negative one point three five percent. The Recreation Department is up one hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars or ten point eight percent. Food Service Fund down three fifty-three, three hundred and fifty-three thousand. And the reason that one is down a little bit is, we're kinda stabilizing now in the Food Service Fund. We kind of know how many lunches there are now, and with the addition of the breakfast program, we kinda, kinda know where we are right now. Because with the transition to SITXO, there was a little bit of up and down until we figured it out. But that's a self-supporting fund. So we're down there, three hundred and fifty-three thousand. And the other reason we're down too is, we're actually taking a break this year from doing improvements, which we've been going from school to school in remodeling cafeteria areas. And we're gonna build a little fund balance for next year, which, and I believe the next project that we're gonna address is that Longfellow. Some of the, the lines, the line doesn't flow very well there on some of the eating arrangements there, so that'll happen next year. The Donation Fund, up zero. Capital Improvement Fund forty-nine, it's down three hundred and fifty thousand. That was actually money that would, may have been used for the Fisher remodel here, which we do not need. If you wanna look at the graphical incre- the decrease, you see right there, the budget is down, again, one point three eight perc- three five percent. My glasses back on. Following last year drop of six point two seven percent. The total, by category for this year, salaries, forty-three point six million, benefits, nineteen point two, purchased services, eight point seven, non-capital objects, five point five million, capital objects, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, insurance, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, and other objects, three hundred and five thousand, for total budget of seventy-nine million, thirty-three thousand, and thirty-nine dollars. Salaries are down, and it's showing the changes by category, salaries are down a hundred and seventy thousand, benefits down, just under six hundred thousand, purchased services are down, six hundred and eighteen thousand, non-capital objects are up, two point one million, capital objects are down, twenty thousand dollars, insurance is up, two hundred and nineteen thousand, and other objects is down, two million dollars. And I will go through each one of the, show you what the differentials are. Just a graphical look, salaries and benefits, account eighty percent about of the budget, and that's down a little bit. It used to be up near eighty-four percent. Purchased services, eleven point one percent. Non-capital objects, just under seven, and capital objects, one percent. Insurance debt, and other, other objects, one point three four. Salaries are down a hundred and seventy thousand. Our teaching staff this year in the budget is down five point five two FTE. I also had money in for class changes, simply because in the proposed budget, we didn't, I didn't know what the settlement would be or which way we were heading in the direction, but I actually had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. There's some other changes. The aid staff is up three point seven five FTE, and a custodial staff is up point seven five FTE, and that was basically to add more staff for the cleaning of the Montessori school right here at Fisher. Salaries, if you look at the percentage of the total budget, it, it's definitely up. And basically, the reason that's up is because the benefits are down more than anything. The benefits are down five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three percent. Health insurance is the bulk of that, five hundred and forty-two thousand, down. And compensation in lieu of health insurance is also down, two hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. And then next year, I have to add in the WRS retirement for the, just our portion, the retiree, I'm sorry, the employer portion is a hundred, up a hundred and sixty-four thousand or six point six one percent. The rate beginning January first, and this would be also borne by the employee, the same amount, is up to six point six five, up from five point nine percent. The benefits, as you can see, the percent of the total budget is dropping, it's down twenty-four point three two percent now, and I would foresee that trend continuing as we move to the future. I don't think that'll be hedging up or... Salary to benefit ratio, and you can see how this interacts with those other two graphs with the salaries and benefits, it's up to two point two seven now, and definitely on a different trend than it was over the last ten, twelve years where that was coming down. Purchased services, down six hundred and eighteen thousand, six and a half percent. The Fund ten forty-one capital projects are down nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand. That drop is really because a lot of projects came in under budget, and there's actually money sitting in fund balance in Fund forty-one that we'll be able to draw in the future. So part of that is actually money that will be expended, but it's not, what happened was, when we did a lot of the projects that came in under budget, so when, when Tom Kucheski does the capital maintenance plan for next year, he'd be able to tap into that for, for projects for next year. Tuition is up two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, twenty-nine point seven six percent. And open up, open enrollment tuition out is up two hundred and eight thousand. Non-capital objects, up two point one million or sixty-six percent. A lot of this is technology. The software non-instructional is up a hundred and ninety-nine thousand or fifty-eight point eight two, and that's because of cloud-based services, Microsoft SLA, virtual desktop licensing and content filtering. And then the non-capital equipment, up one point four million dollars. And that's basically, in his budget, there's money to add the district-wide wireless network, and there's also money for some, not a, a lot, but there's some money in there for wireless network devices. and there's also money for some, not a, a lot, but, uh, there's some money in there for wireless network devices that can be used with the district wireless network, and then there's new PCs and storage for the virtual desktops.
Could we, could we please?
As far as the textbooks, and I kind of touched on it before, it's up four hundred and three thousand from last year, and science textbook carryover, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars.
John, could we back up a slide to the, two slides now?
Go on, or?
Yeah, the, um, where we come in under budget, I'd just like to tie this into the philosophy against borrowing, that we, we more often than not want to come in under budget so that we have, so then what we spend next year is money we, we know for sure we have. It's part of the whole philosophy and approach.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And the other thing you, you always want to, I mean, when Bruce Johnson was here, and I explained it to Tom, the philosophy here, is when we budget for things, you want to always go to the upper side of what things have cost, because it's a lot easier to push that money forward and use it on another project, and to come back and say, this went over. You know, that, that's the last thing we want to have happen. So that money definitely is, and that's the overall philosophy with all the budgeting, is that the leftover money goes to help finance the next year's budget.
And we do this in part because we, we don't want a short-term borrow, that, that we want to
Well, if you, if you, if you had a practice of, um, overspending, I mean, the more conservative you budget, the less risk you are is having to spend down your fund balance and pushing you towards short-term borrowing.
So these, these, I understand. So these things are not by accident that they happen, really? They're, they're by design, by an approach?
It's by design, and quite honestly, this, this, this remnant here is from Bruce Johnson, just because he was very conservative. And he, when he would budget for capital maintenance projects, he did that, and he did it intentionally. I mean, simply because he knew if he had money left over, he could start the next year off with more projects. From time to time, that, that, that will happen.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Yes.
Before we leave that topic, I just want to clarify where are we getting the money to make our capital improvements this next budget cycle?
In this year?
Yes.
It's in Fund Ten.
It's in Fund Ten, okay.
And that's what I was trying to explain. Actually, I, I don't want to make it too confusing, but Ten and Forty-One, they work right, they're, they're just a different accounting structure where you can pull. The only reason we use Fund Forty-One is when we were negative aided,
Right.
what happened was, if you spent in the first year a half a million dollars, what DPI would do is they would split it over two years the first time. So you will only have two hundred fifty thousand going into next year's costs, thus we would lose less aid, because two hundred fifty thousand would be a deferred expense that would be pushed into next year's share price amortization. And over time, we're, we're up to like fifteen years, so if you spent, um, uh, one point five million, you only have a hundred fifty thousand going into next year's costs now. It, it, that's why I was explaining before, it's a complicated amortization schedule, which I personally don't know why DPI ended up doing that, except maybe to give a break to negative tertiary aid district. But the fact is, we were about three and a half million dollars below where our spending can go up to before we hit that negative tertiary aid now, because we pulled back, we pulled back a lot last year. And we pulled back more probably than we needed to, in fact, I know with that. So that we pulled out of negative aid, so I don't want to lose aid next year. So what I did is I took them out of Forty-One and just put them to Ten. And it's just an accounting thing, putting them in Fund Ten, but that way I will include them a hundred percent, whatever the spending is on the next year's cost, and we will get more aid, and that's why I did it. So instead of having, it's just the way it's accounted for on the books, but I just, Forty-One to Ten, I just slipped them back. And the levy, when I set the levy limit, the levy limit that you have applies to Fund Ten, and if we don't use Fund Thirty, but it applies to Ten and Forty-One. So whatever Fund Forty-One is, I just lower Fund Ten by that amount. They work hand in hand with each other. They're, they're one in the same levy limit.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And then just to clarify, the nine seventy-seven reduction?
Right, that's, that's
Is in the fund balance.
Right, because we, normally we budget, well, it's not, we don't have that much. I mean, there was a re- there was a reduction. I'd have to show you the, the actual expenditures in Fund Forty-One, which as you can see in the budget book here. Um, but there is money left over from last year. And we budgeted one point five million for twelve thirteen. That's what we normally budget, because there was actually, um, a little bit more spent last year, because we had the one point five plus, we had the project here in the gym, which we actually spent some fund balance for. I'd have to give you a whole, I could give you a whole analysis on that, exactly aboard with that, but
That's okay. I can take it offline. I just wanted to, you know, very clearly understand we have projects that we have laid out, and where in fact are we gonna get that money. So, okay, thanks.
Um, looking at the revenue side of this, the property tax, um, forty-three point four six five million. Um, state sources, twenty-three point four four million. Uh, federal sources, three point one seven million, and local sources, nine point seven million. Now that, I, when I showed this here, that, that local source actually includes a chargeback levy of one, one million eighty-nine thousand, seven seventy-seven. The property tax, um, is up one point five million or three point six four percent. The state sources are down, nine hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars, down three point eight two percent. The federal sources are up, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And the local sources are up, uh, one point six million, one point seven million dollars. So the total is two point one million dollars, and again, that local source has, out of that total, one million. This is the change now, so that's why the number's a little bit different. The change is one million eighty-one thousand. Um, graphically, just looking at the property taxes, fifty-four point forty percent of the pool. State sources, twenty-nine point three eight, uh, federal sources, three point nine eight, and the other local sources, twelve point one six percent. The property tax, I already explained that with the levy, um, the state sources down nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The equalization and special aids, and I put the elder because that affect directly affects the levy, it's down three hundred ninety-nine, almost four hundred thousand dollars. Equalization aid is up six million dollars, and the special adjustment aid, which is like the equalization aid, because we kicked into the hold harmless last year, is down six point four million dollars. The chapter two twenty aid, again affects the levy, is down four hundred and seventy-nine, almost four hundred and eighty thousand. And we're down twenty-nine FTE from a ten eleven to the eleven twelve membership, because there's a one-year lag, the way that's calculated. So our membership now for two twenty, um, and that's last year's, it's down from two thirty-five to two oh six. Uh, special education aid, down a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that's simply because we spent less. County programs, state tuition, down a hundred and seventy-six thousand, simply because we spent less with the budget reductions, and that's on a year lag. Um, next year, we get fifty dollar per member revenue cap aid, and that's a one-year, one-time aid, basically fifty dollars per member, three hundred thousand dollars. And then I just wanted to just go over a little bit with you and tell you why. Because with the factors affecting, affecting equalization aid paid in twelve thirteen, we made, we overcut last year a little bit, and basically, we could have gotten a little bit more aid had we not cut as much, but that was something that when you cut that much from a budget, um, you don't know. I didn't, we didn't really even know what the aid formula was gonna be like, how, what the variables were gonna be in it, so. Uh, but I, but I do say that did affect us a little bit. This next number, the ten percent hold harmless aid, what, what DPI did last year, and it normally has a fifteen percent hold harmless, but a district's aid couldn't go down more than ten percent last year. So basically, you, they put an artificial floor on the drop last year. So this year, that, that's gone. So some of the aid we would have lost last year, we lost it this year. And that's what happened. So they basically put an artificial, said, even on Walertos, you would have lost more aid last year. We're not gonna let you lose that. This year, we lost it. So basically, like two twenty, and I know from the drop in the number of, the number of kids we had, we would have lost more aid last year, but we didn't, because they had the, they had an, uh, they had an artificial, uh, limit on there, of ten percent aid loss. So we lost more this year, simply because we didn't lose as much last year, it's because they had that hold harmless on there. And then this is, this is another tricky one, that I'm not too sure how they thought about this. But districts with unexpired teacher contracts, like Milwaukee Public Schools, is the biggest one. And they actually took more aid because they spent more. So every district that lost aid kind of gave aid to the districts that spent more. I'm not too sure that was intended by the legislature when it, when they made some of these new rules, but it happened. It happened, and it's gonna happen again next year, because, um, aid is on a one-year delay, and a lot of, and I shouldn't say a lot of district, but there are districts out there that have teacher contracts still in effect that are like paying the full WRS, um, health insurance type things for this year that we're in right now. So the aid next year again, and I don't know how much it is, but it, the only way you could do is actually lower their costs and see what the aid differential would have been to all the districts, but that did have an effect. It had an effect on the entire state. Under the federal sources, we're up from five hundred fifty-nine thousand, Medicaid reimbursement up two hundred ninety thousand. That's actually been stabilized. I didn't want to adjust the budget until I knew that was gonna stabilize. And then our Title One grant allocation is up a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and that's based on, um, apparently, we have, um, a few more poverty, our poverty level in our district, um, has gone up a little bit, so we get a little bit more Title One grant allocation money. Um, local sources, um, is up nine hundred forty-one thousand, and I don't know if you remember, this, talked about this in June. The driver ed fees that were shifted to Fund Eighty, um, the whole program is in the recreation department now. That, that caused a decrease of a hundred and two thousand dollars. The chargeback levy change, um, increased the local sources a million dollars. Open enrollment revenue is down a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, almost a hundred and forty. And interest revenue, actually, this, this is part of it too, the open enrollment, enrollment revenue drop. I actually, when we did the budget adjustments last year, I don't know if you remember this or not, but I told you, we adjusted for that last year already. So that was taken into consideration in the last budget. And interest revenue was up sixty-five thousand dollars. When we, uh, switched banks, I was very fortunate to lock into a rate guarantee that's a hundred percent collateralized, but we're actually doing very well on investments right now comparatively to other, other places. So that's the end of the financial overview. Now what I'm gonna do is I want to turn it over to Dr. Erdl, who will go over what his budget does as far as how this ties with the education that we're delivering.
Thank you. Um, I guess the, the real question is, what do we get? What do our taxpayers get? What do our students get for eighty million dollars? And I think it's important to point out that it, it's not just, certainly not random spending, that there is a focus, there is a driver for what we're trying to accomplish, and I think on the previous slide, talks about our long-range plan, and what our long-range plan, how that has continued to drive our district development plan and other goals as well. And up on the, the screen right now, you see the three strategic, um, objectives from our latest update of our long-range plan. So everything we do fits within those, uh, those three objectives. John, you wanna?
Sorry.
And I'm just gonna walk through some of the things that we've introduced this year or continued this year, and the impact that the dollars do have on, on, on our district. We do it, we have an additional period of literacy instruction at the middle school. That's an ongoing, uh, growth process. We also introduced, uh, project Lead the Way to the Sixth Grade Students at both middle schools this year. We did add the middle school STEM program, um, for sixth and seventh grade students at Longfellow and at Whitman. We continue to grow, uh, summer school opportunities. I, this past summer, the largest number of students, um, that we've ever had have taken summer school courses. We also added sixth grade Spanish at both middle schools. We continue to increase our AP course offerings, and the number of students that continue to take them grows as well. And we also are continuing with math and literacy coaching. I know Mr. Chen and I, um, have been going around to the buildings, having meetings with, with staff, and several different times, it comes up, the value that the teachers see in the, the math and literacy coaching that's been provided to them. Our science curriculum and the staff development for science is ongoing this year and continues. And the secondary or the high school science curriculum is being developed this year, and will be brought forward to the board at some point. Technology upgrades for science, um, as well as other technology upgrades, targeted hybrid classes. So last year, we tried, um, just certain hours of hybrid classes. This year, we, we use that information and put together, um, specific classes for hybrid courses. And continued opportunities for online classes, and the, uh, plan to bring a charter school proposal to the board for online or virtual school. PBIS, which is our behavior modification program, um, has been increased, and the efforts continue to increase. And we've introduced it at Whitman and Longfellow this year. And also ramped up our, our Level Two training for PBIS. And also improved school facilities and athletic fields. We continue to, to work on, as Mr. Mack mentioned, that the amount of dollars we put into our buildings to keep, um, improving and, uh, maintaining our buildings. Montessori school expanded into sixth grade, uh, with an additional section of JK and SK in this building. There'll be a forthcoming recommendation for secondary schedule that will have budgetary impacts as well. And we've also added a transition, um, in development for the middle, or elementary, middle school, middle school to high school with link crew and web crew, so some additional programs to help students with their, their transitions. And also as recommended tonight, the wireless infrastructure for improved access to instructional materials. Some of the things that we're continuing, the, the PLC weekly time that we have on Wednesday early release, I think, is just critical for, um, for growth in our district, for our teachers. That time has been used vali- valuably, and will continue, can you, can't talk, continue to be used in that way as well. Our BLT model for professional development, there's expenditures, there's costs associated with that, but I think it, um, is probably the best type of professional development that we have in the district, in the pay-it-forward model, where we're training people to become trainers of, of staff development opportunities. We have no significant increase in class sizes or teacher load this year, which obviously is, with eighty percent of our budget going to pay for people, we know that that, that has maintained itself. We've purchased additional elementary reading interventions. We also improved our special education interventions for literacy at the middle school. And we're working on the health and human growth and development curriculum that will be coming forward to the board at some point in the near future. We are also growing our breakfast programs. It's being added at Whitman and Madison, the next two schools, and then we will continue on till we have breakfast offered at all of our schools. Fair compensation for staff. I believe that what, what the board has done and what the budget shows, that we do have fair compensation for our staff, and we're continuing to work on future compensation as well. Uh, continued support for courageous conversations. We look at some of the diversity, uh, trainings that go on. We're gonna be continuing with some courageous conversations, training in the, uh, in the spring. Our common core alignment in math and ELA, we continue to work on that. And further development of TeachScape, and TeachScape is a software system that we currently use for walkthroughs, but it will become a major staple in the, um, teacher evaluation and principal evaluation system. So we're continuing that development as well. And that, I, I think in the, in the big picture too, what do, what do, what do we get for the money that we spend? I think our, our student report cards or school accountability report cards that came out, um, I think is a good sign of what do we get? We have, four of our schools are rated, um, as exceeding, or significantly exceeding expectations, which is very high. Actually, one of our schools, a WSTEM, has the top score in the state of Wisconsin. Um, all of our schools meet or meet, meet exceed, um, expectations, and I think that, that defines us as a school district of, of being a high-quality school district, and I think the education our students are getting is beyond reproach. our students are getting is beyond reproach.
Now, may I interrupt? Those scores, are they being released to the community? Were they going to be today?
They were released today.
Okay. And was there a press release of some sort or?
There is information that was sent out as well as it, all of the information posted on the district website and different links of where they can go to access all the information related to it, but we did send out an Alert Now message.
Yeah, I strongly urge everyone to take a look at those. They are stunningly good for many, many of our buildings. And so I congratulate Dr. Erdl and his staff on those scores, but that's the kind of value you're pointing to for this budget? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any more administrative presentation? Okay. Board comments and questions, Mr. Kroner, please.
Just a question on your last comment. Will we be reviewing those scores at a board meeting in the near future?
I think we certainly can.
Okay. And among the list of projects you had was a technology upgrade for science. And in the past, we talked about remodeling the science labs. Is that the project that you're talking about?
That's part of it. That's included. The science labs are, I don't know the timeline on them, but they are being upgraded at the middle school and then the next will be the high school.
And if I remember, that was a fairly significant expense. Do you have an estimate for that? I do not.
Oh, we just started to look, we started with the middle school labs and the plan is that we're just starting to look at plans. We've actually been meeting with people and, you know, so we are quite there yet. We just had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and we're waiting for some architects to come back with plans that would start to do some costing. But the plan is that as soon as school would be out, the middle school labs at both Whitman and Longfellow, over the summer, that that whole remodel would take place and they would have it done by mid-August. And that's kind of the assurance that we were given so far in conversations we've had. And then the following year, we would do something very similar with our high school labs.
Okay. That's a little frustrating because I know we talked about this. We, we remodeled the gym instead of doing the high school labs. So I'm a little surprised we're putting it off another year, but I understand the plan.
Yeah, it was just difficult to do it during the school year with the kids now, so that that's...
We refurbished the tennis courts before we did the science labs.
Questions for Mr. Mack? Thank you. That's, as usual, you do a really nice job with our budgets and I know we're lucky to have you in the district. Question I have, which we talk about often, and I don't know if we can put some specific numbers on, can you give a specific dollar value to the fund balance?
You have to be, tell me what you mean, what you want exactly, I mean, for fund balance, because what you're talking about, like, like for example, the audit will show that our fund balance went up two million dollars this past year, but actually eight hundred seventy-seven thousand was in a reserve fund for self-funded health insurance of that two million dollars. So it's not going to be sponsored, it's not even spendable money for, for, for next year. So when you talk about some fund balance, it, 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 I, I could do something if Dr. Erdl wants me to do it. I mean, I think that would be the best communication. If he wants me to present something or not, I, I think that would be something that you should work with him on doing because I'll, I, I will do whatever he asks me to do that way. And it's not an easy thing to really understand because, and it's not super hard, but you have to understand that we don't short-term borrow, so you're going to have money to get you from June through January fifteenth. On top of that, you have to have the money to cover the liability account. And then any moment money above that is, is spendable. However, that's the cushion that you have that makes a school district in the long term very financially stable because as a school board, you can react to things that are unforeseen. And probably even more important than that, you can react to things that are unforeseen and you have no control over them. And that's why you want to have that. It's really for long-term fiscal health to be in that position. And I think it's very special to be in that position. And I think Mrs. Weber would even say over the, since I've been here, this, this place has been run financially, fiscally conservative and very, very well financially managed from the get-go, right, right for a long period of time.
Absolutely.
I personally think that having a little bit of a fund balance there to react to unforeseen issues and, and what we're looking for in revenue limits coming up here in the next budget cycle, if they're very low, we might be able to do things that other districts can't do. And that's because we have a little bit of a cushion to spend there. And, and that's why. And as far as you want me to get detailed, I mean, I normally don't.
Well, I, I guess I would make a request that we just have a presentation because many times the board uses that term when we're discussing about budgetary issues and I don't think we're all on the same page on that. You know, recovering the money from the chargeback levy was talked about in the, as a fund balance issue, but I'm not clear what, what fund balance is actually being talked about and what the dollar amounts are there. So I would like in the future to have more, maybe a definition that we can all agree on so that when we speak about the fund balance as a board, we're all on the same page and talking about the same thing. My other question is just related to the fund balance in general. How do you decide if there is fund balance to spend? For example, is there a number that you use to?
Well, there's layers that I just talked about. We have to have enough money to avoid short-term borrowing. And then there's the layer that covers all our liabilities that we do owe. And for example, eight hundred seventy-seven thousand in self-funded insurance, you're not going to spend that because we have that. Actually, I have to show that on, when I do a, in a report to DTI, I have to show that in a separate fund balance. There's, there's actually different levels of fund balance in there. I have to show that reserve for self-funded health insurance. But then what I do is I do a reconciliation to show how much cash we have basically, because here's where you get confusion, cash versus fund balance. They are two different things and people use them interchangeably. It's not how much cash you have, because your cash has to cover your liability. Fund, fund balance would be your assets minus your liability. And that's how you get your fund balance. Used rather interchangeably in government entities because we don't have, like, for us, we don't have long-term debt, but the amount after we cover the liabilities per se, that's how much you, you would have for spendable.
But the amount that we need to, to have a set aside to spend for the remaining part of the year so that we don't short-term borrow, that's a known amount. Isn't it the amount that we will need?
Yeah, that, that, that's a big, that's one part of the fund balance that you would want to have. And then I'm saying you have to have the amount that covers the liability and then any amount of debt theoretically, that would give you cushion for any unforeseen events and long-term fiscal health. So I'm not sure, you know, you don't have ten million extra dollars sitting in there as far as for, you know, unforeseen events, you know what I mean? Could we do, and then, and then what I try to do is, and then every single year is actually use whatever we're left over last year, it pushed into the budget for the next year. So any money left over, it's rolled into the next year. That, that's just a method that has been used here to avoid the short-term borrowing because it doesn't really touch, touch the, the other fund balance. You got to make it work with what you had over last year. And then if you want to do something special, you can go to that third tier and take some money out of there and, and finance it. And there's a lot, there's a lot of variables with that.
So the, the tax chargeback money that we're collecting this year, that, you know, approximately a million dollars, that's not going into a special fund? That's just going into the general fund?
That would be pushed into fund balance. It's in fund balance rebuild. That's why I have it in the budget. And you understand this too, and I never came out and said this, but if you would, the money that we're going to receive from a TIF payout in 2015, that's categorized differently accounting-wise as tax chargeback money. If you get that money in 2015, if you don't spend it, we will lose about four hundred thousand and eight and taxes would go off if you don't spend that. When you get the money through this tax chargeback, there's no need to spend. So there is actually even a difference with that, the way we, the money comes in, the way the revenue can go back to fund balance. And we did pay that money at a fund balance. I mean, that's what we get. That was that third tier. We said, okay, we owe it, we're going to give it back, then we'll put it back.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Fee, please.
Thank you. First off, thank you very much. I would echo what Mr. Kroner said. This is always very thorough and it's a very complicated issue and I very much appreciate your depth of knowledge. I have concerns about one number that was up there, but it's not really a question for you, it's for Dr. Erdl. And that's the increase in the outgoing tuition for open enrollment. I'm sure some of that is due to an increase in what we have to pay for each student, but it's over two hundred thousand dollars. And so I have to assume that we have a fairly significant increase in the number of students who are leaving. And my question is, are we looking into why they're leaving? We've been expanding programming in order to attract and retain more students. And if they're going out, I'm wondering if we're finding out why and whether we're meeting their needs. And I don't need an answer now, but I do think that that's something that we should look at if there is in fact an increase in the number of students who are leaving our district.
We do look at it and the reasons, yes.
Perhaps we could hear about it sometime.
There is an analysis in process as to where the decrease in resident enrollment went, if there are any identifiable, any identifiable single components or, or discrete components that can be identified, that will come to the board.
Thank you.
Is there any other board comment or question? Is there any community comment or question on the action items? Seeing none. Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
We will now move to the student learning action items. Mrs. Muefeld, please, will you read the items?
Yes, thank you. Under item one, Instructional Resource and Content Initiative, I will be reading three parts, A, B, and C. One, A, VOIP Upgrade. It is recommended that the school board approve the low and recommended bidder Heartland Business Systems for the VOIP upgrade of current system to latest version, including three years of software maintenance at a cost of sixty-five thousand dollars. Item one, B, Wireless Components. It is further recommended that the school board approve the low and recommended bidder Heartland Business Systems for the purchase of all software components and hardware to enable wireless accessibility across all district buildings, including three years of software maintenance at a cost of seven hundred thirteen thousand six hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. Item one, C, Implementation of Cabling. It is further recommended that the school board approve the cost of implementation of cabling and associated components relative to the wireless accessibility project at a cost not to exceed one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Kroner seconded. Is, Dr. Erdl, is there any presentation? Or I know Mr. Price is available for questions. This is fundamentally what we discussed at the last meeting with the student learning presentation with Mrs. Ehrenberger where Mr. Price came up and, and took some inquiries from the board on the strategy and the various factors involved in the pricing and, and the plan.
Correct.
So is there any board comment or question? Mr. Kroner, please.
I have a comment. I'm, I have a, actually I'd like to separate item A from B and C, if we could deal with those separately.
So we've had a request for, you, do you want separate vote, Mr. Kroner?
Oh, I think that would be the easiest way to do it.
Okay. Separate vote on item A and then that leaves us voting on B and C together. Is there, are you able to expand on your, I'm assuming there's some discussion you or comment you wish to make as to why you're wanting to differentiate them?
I will make it once it's separated.
Okay. Well, I've agreed that it is separate. So do you want separate, separate discussion?
Oh, yes, I do. I thought we were going to vote on that, but if we're not, okay. Are we going to vote on A first?
Well, I'm not sure which, which is the one you wanted to discuss. You know, what, what's the, what's the one that you want to expand upon? Or perhaps even both?
Either way, I'm more concerned about B and C, the wireless components. I'm very much in favor of increasing the wireless capability of district. I have absolutely no problem with that. I think it's the right direction to go. My concern is that this is a, just shy of a nine hundred thousand dollar project and we've not received actually any official documentation or description, written description or presentation on this. Now, we did have a presentation on the educational aspects of it, which was okay, but normally in projects like this, we would at least have a presentation, if not at least a summary written document of the decision-making process and, you know, the timetable for what the work that was to be done and that sort of thing. So to me, it's highly unusual to be moving forward without, without any information. So that just surprises me. So my, I would make a motion to postpone this item until the next meeting so that we can have at least a short presentation, a summary documents describing what this project entails.
So just so I understand, you're, you're making a motion to postpone B and C?
Yes.
To?
The next meeting.
To the next meeting? Is there any, is the word postpone adequate for our procedural understanding of what's being requested? Okay. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Mrs. Muefeld seconded. So now we'll have discussion on the motion to postpone to the next items B and C, to the next regularly scheduled board meeting. And Mr. Kroner, you've presented some of your reasoning. Is there any addition, anything you wish to add?
Yes, actually. Mr. Meyer, you stated earlier in the meeting when we were discussing the PE credit, that sometimes we just vote yes or no and we don't get it down to the details. And to me, this is a, this is a time where, where to not get into any of the details just doesn't seem right to me. I mean, if someone from the community were to come up to me and say, I see you're spending nine hundred thousand dollars in a wireless system, that's great. What are they doing? Well, you know, we don't have, board's not been given any information about that. And we don't normally rush into projects of this magnitude without the appropriate documentation. When we did a project of similar size, when we remodeled the gym, we had plans, we had estimates, we had timetable for construction. You know, we were given basic information about the project. As I said, I support this project, but I just think we need to follow the same protocol for this as we do other major projects. I think one important thing for me when I work on the board is to try to maintain the same standards for the things I favor as the ones I might not, might be against or not in favor of. And this is one of those things that I'm in favor of, but I just don't think the board is following the appropriate protocol for approval. And so that is my request, is to delay it for one meeting, have a presentation and more information presented at the next meeting and then vote on it.
Is there any other board comment on the motion to postpone? Mrs. Randall?
I just would say I don't support the motion, nor do I feel that I don't have adequate information. We talked about this quite a bit. We have the bids. Mr. Price has explained quite a few times why we're doing it and how we're doing it. And, and I thought we had an excellent presentation at our last meeting from Mrs. Ehrenberger that tied it all together. So I have sufficient information. I'm very comfortable with the recommendation. Frankly, you know, the technical pieces of, you know, the cabling and all of that, I, I don't believe is necessary, so I don't see a need for the postponement.
Is there any other board question or comment regarding the motion?
Mr. Meyer, I have one.
Yes, Mrs. Muefeld.
Maybe Dr. Erdl and Mr. Price just refresh my memory a little bit. I know at the end of the last meeting when we discussed this, I'm pretty sure we called this correctly, Dr. Erdl said you were going to bring back more, you know, concrete information and I'm assuming you meant... And I'm assuming you meant this bid proposal?
Right.
Is what you were going to bring back?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other board comment? I'll make my comment. Sometimes I seem to forget that I may, based on the line of work I'm in for my day job, that there's context that I bring to this that other people might not have. And that context is that over the course of a number of years now with Mr. Price in service to this district, he has regularly delivered successful projects. He has established the fiber backbone between the buildings that could carry load of it and he's demonstrated the ability to size these things correctly. He's, that fiber proposal was implemented, it's according to the long-term technical plan that he presented. As was asked at the last meeting, there are server requirements where that fiber comes into the building, they are sized adequately. The, the touch points or workstations for the students have been considered by Mr. Price in a calculated process over a number of years. The, the sort of missing link here is to get the, the network connection from, from the servers in the buildings to the student workstations. The components are basically those wireless routers that you see in ceilings and buildings, the wires that go to those wireless routers back to the servers or there's, I'm sure there's other words for the, the larger servers that are, and routers that are at the entry points to the buildings. So there has over a long time been a presentation of a very careful strategy that Mr. Price has been following. So in this case, there, there are details in my mind. The analogy was drawn to the physical education discussion. Oh, there are more details there that are of a human resource strategy nature that I didn't feel were appropriate under the agenda that we have. So I withheld my comment. So I do try to maintain a consistency. I apologize for assuming or forgetting that other people haven't looked at this from the eyes I look through when I listen to Mr. Price. But I do support this, these items B and C. And we saw that there were bids let out and that there was decisions made by Mr. Price on the, on the correct bid. So these were bidded contracts that we're voting on or bidded prices. So I see no reason to have any question or doubt about Mr. Price's recommendation. What Mr. Price is doing is an enabling technology and that supports the educational strategy and therefore as a commitment of IT resources, it is not IT for the sake of IT, it's in furtherance of our educational goals. So there is my reasoning for voting. I will vote yes for this. Is there any other board comment or question? Oh, yes. Mr. Croner?
Just a quick response if I may. As I said at the outset, Mr. Price does great work and this is not a reflection on anything that he does or I think he may do. I trust what he's going to do. To me, it's a matter of just upholding regular standards for the board. If what you're saying is someone new to the district has to give us more documentation than someone that hasn't, has been here for a while and does a good job, I don't think that's the appropriate way for the board to work. I think we should set certain standards for, to get, gather information for projects we're going to approve and keep that for every, every project that we approve. And this is a particularly expensive one, eight hundred thousand dollars. So I'm not asking for much, but I understand that this will probably go forward, but I just think it would be, I think we're going down a dangerous path if we start proving, you know, close to million-dollar projects without documentation.
Is there any other board comment or question?
I just do want to be clear that, I guess I would echo everything Mr. Meyer said. This is not new. This is information we've been provided. And I guess I'd like to get the focus shift from board operations to outcome for students, which is what this entire proposal was built on. You know, maybe we need to talk as a board about different things, but we need to get our focus where it belongs. And it belongs on outcomes for our kids. And to that end, we have employed a person. I will tell you, I ran into a teacher from Racine this weekend who also does IT work in his district. And as we were talking, he mentioned Mr. Price. He knew him by reputation. So, you know, the focus is, should not, for this type of a thing, be on how much detail each of us needs. We need to take responsibility for asking Mr. Price, Dr. Erdl, for the level of detail we want. But I don't want to sit here and be viewed as somebody who doesn't care about the details, who will spend millions of dollars without thinking about it or without documentation. I, I have sufficient documentation. I believe we've all been presented with that. And that's all.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Sorry, just one more quick comment. And it is going to piggyback on what Mrs. Randall just said. There is further drill-down detailed information. We have obviously gone through a very detailed RFP process, correct? And it does follow our existing policy for how we would go about contracting with vendors for projects of this nature. So if a board member wants more detailed information, that's always accessible to them. And so I agree, there isn't any need to make an extra presentation of the RFP. That would be, in my opinion, a deviation from what our standard process would be of purchases of this nature.
Thank you, Mrs. Muehlfeld. I'd only add here that the size of this has to do with that these wireless routers are going to service every classroom building in the school district. So the, you know, summation of all of those occurrences adds up to a large amount of money. But the decision on what to do in any individual room, after Mr. Price supplies his expert judgment as to the capacity of the router and the wiring to the router from the server, there, there isn't much to this anymore then after that. So the, the size sort of, you know, doesn't state the nature of the calculus that goes into, you know, getting to that big of a number when you consider that it's, it's a summation of the cost to get this to every room in the district. Okay. And that's all I have to say. Is there any community, oh, Mrs. Weber, yes.
Mr. Price, how long, when this passes, how long before the work will begin that we can have it in the classroom for our young people? And I asked at the last meeting, this is going to serve kindergarten four through the twelfth grade of high school. How long will this take to put in action?
Work would start immediately. Tomorrow, we would purchase or submit the purchase order for the equipment. Sorry, I've got a bit of cut in the mouth because we've been sitting here for two and a half hours.
Mr. Meyer, could we dispose of the motion before we get into the general discussion of the project?
I have a question that's going to help me make a decision that I, on my vote.
Yes, I agree. Mrs. Weber, I think her question is directed towards the logic for or against postponing the decision. Is that, is that correct, Mrs. Weber? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Please continue, Mrs. Weber.
We expect to see full implementation across the high schools and middle schools by the end of the calendar year and completion through the elementary schools by late February, mid to late February.
So we won't really, if I understand you correctly, we won't know? Or they, it will not be in use until next school year?
No, it'll be in use in a, in a growing capacity.
In a what?
Growing capacity. As, as they implement, we turn it on. So if you have a building and we start to, we want it wireless, it grows across the building. We expect the completion across all the secondary schools within two months.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the rest of the elementary schools, a couple of months after that. But, you know, every day, more and more students will be able to use it. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
It's like laying a road out and you can, you can go a little bit further down the road every day.
That's what I need to know.
Yep.
Thank you.
And that is consistent with the incremental, you know, cost of every room has a certain cost to put the router and the wire to the router. And is that accurate?
Yes.
And that's, when you get to all the rooms, it adds up to a lot of money?
Yes.
Okay.
Six hundred and sixty-odd rooms.
My point is that we are constantly promoting, make the Wauwautosa School District even better than it is, keeping in mind we are serving the young people of this community. And that's why I want to know how soon can this be made available to them? And you answered my question, so thank you.
Is there any other board comment or question? Is there any community comment or question regarding the motion to postpone to the next regular board meeting? All right. Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll on the motion to postpone items B and C to the next regular board meeting?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Gerroz?
No.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
No.
Mrs. Randall?
No.
Mrs. Weber?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
No. Motion fails. Now we'll go to discussing the substance of B and C.
What happened to A?
Well, we will get to that. We're taking separate vote. The chair wasn't clear on whether we were taking separate discussion. I apologize for that. So, but now that we're in it, discussing it, I prefer that we finish one section and that, that we're going to vote on and then discuss and vote on the other section. So my failing. With that said, so now we're discussing B and C. Well, and let me, and let me ask, is there any reason to discuss them together? No? Okay. Is there any board comment on the substance of B and C for the wireless components and the implementation of the cabling? Mr. Croner, please.
Mr. Price? Could you briefly describe the system that you chose to put in the school district for the wireless communication and how you came to that decision?
It's actually an expansion of the current system that we have. That's it.
Which is?
Cisco Wireless Infrastructure. How much detail do you want? Access points that are mounted in the ceilings that go back to our core infrastructure and enable wireless connectivity.
So there'd be access points in each room?
Yes. Well, in each room where they're necessary, yeah. We don't put them in bathrooms or, or other, you know, locations where wireless access is not as necessary, but yes.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any other board question or comment? My only comment on the underlying substance is that this technology expenditure supports, directly supports the learning strategy to get every kid at every desk access to the content without having to leave, leave their desk or to leave the room. So that said, is there any community comment or question on the substance of B and C? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Gerroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. Now we're discussing the Voice Over Internet Protocol Upgrade action item. Is there any board question or comment? Mrs. Randall?
I just have a question of how did we get such a low bid from Heartland compared to the other two? Is that because we?
Because of the connections they have with vendors.
That's what I thought.
And because they, they actually took the initiative to bundle it with this other project and take advantage of some discounts that were being offered.
Okay. Because we have a part of the relationship and you have, okay. Thanks. Good work.
Any other board comment or question? Any community comment or question? Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll on item A, the Voice Over Internet Protocol Upgrade?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Gerroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. I believe that ends our regular agenda for the open meeting. At this time, we will, we wish, we wish to adjourn the regular meeting and reconvene into executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn the regular school board meeting and reconvene in executive session to discuss an employee resignation per statutory exemption to Wisconsin's Open Meeting Law, Section nineteen point eight five, Paragraph one, Subparagraph C and F. May I have a motion?
So move.
Mrs. Weber moves. May I have a second?
Sure, a second.
Mr. Gerroz, a second. None of you are as fast as Eileen Donahue was, just to let you know. Mrs. Galante, please, call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Gerroz?